So this section right here for the future, this is if they refer it to a different apartment.
And I'm extremely, extremely, um, task oriented. So I just got to be separated into two areas. I kind of have one, this is going further back, this one comes in. I'm extremely task oriented, we gotta get to those and all this information.
Yep. Good. Clerk Garcia, can we call committee hold to order, please?
Good evening. Caldwell?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Leesha? Faith?
Here.
Habon?
Here.
Halashek?
Here.
Brockman?
Here.
Carmichael?
Here.
Eight Eyes Mayor.
Okay, on the agenda tonight, we have Dave Halsberg from the Burnham Development Corporation in a discussion about sixty-eight oh four Windsor and sixty-six oh nine to thirty-nine Stanley. You all have the memorandum that was handed out on your desk. Okay, David, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first property that we're here to discuss is sixty-eight hundred through sixty-eight oh four Windsor Avenue. We know this at the southwest corner of Windsor and Oak Park. I've got it up there on the screen for you. This building was built nineteen thirty as an art deco building. It's five stories, roughly forty-seven thousand square feet, plus a basement of about twelve thousand five hundred square feet. Building has, appears to be very solid. We've gone through it with contractors and others. We've done some environmental review on it, short of some asbestos in the structure. It's in fine shape and looks good. This evening, what I'm looking for is some direction from city council of what types of uses would be appropriate and those that would be inappropriate that you feel for this particular structure. The mayor had asked that we hold off on discussion until the new council was seated, although the city has been in possession of this property since earlier this year. It's just been delayed waiting for your arrival. Perhaps the best way to start is let's go over a little bit of the zoning on this property. It's zone C three depot mixed use. On the back of your packet, you have a table of uses. It's a two-page document, a front and a back. If you look at the C three column, it will tell you those uses that are allowed, which means P as permitted, those uses that are a special use are so designated and those unit or those uses that don't have anything means it's not allowed in that particular district. So the types of things that the comprehensive plan or states for this area is that we should be promoting high-density, mixed-use, walkable transit-oriented design because of the proximity to the metro station, which is literally across the street. And it designated the subarea of the depot district for healthcare-related uses to support success of the growth of healthcare facilities. I will say that since McNeil changed its status to not-for-profit and no longer producing property taxes for the community, that particular use is not a desirous use at this point. It's a negative burden on the community as a result of police and fire and other issues associated there. But if it is deemed that that's something that you'd like, certainly it's something that can be included. But just as a reference point, when the comprehensive plan was written, that was not the case. Since that time, Mayor, you can correct me, but we've lost roughly about two million dollars in property tax.
Roughly, yes.
Between the various governmental units. For Berwyn itself, that's roughly a million dollars of that share. So we take a heavy hit when that did occur. Granted, it is a community function that happens at that location benefiting the city and its residents. However, it also benefits the entire region as we often see transports coming from outside of our community in order to be facilitated at that property. So the comprehensive plan is a living document. We can change it as a city as we see fit and as times change. So consider it again, a living document that can change. It's not prescriptive, meaning that it has to stay the way it is. The same with the zoning code. The zoning code tells you, hey, these are the things that we believe we would like to see and those things that not. We have, the city has taken a stance on this particular property as when it was going up for auction, that it was a grandfather non-conforming use that lost its non-conforming status. So what that means is there was no parking provided for that use. And as a result of it being vacant for more than a year, we then took the position in saying, if you want to reoccupy it, you're gonna have to address parking. Either you have to provide it or you have to come through this body in order to get relief for those parking standards. And those standards vary depending on what the particular use is. So the more dense the type of use is, the more parking is required. Hence, if you were doing a commercial use here, your parking requirements would be doubled or almost triple of what it would, the requirements would be if you were doing apartments per se. Apartments would be one parking space per dwelling unit here, but relief could be granted since there is a parking garage. But the city could go ahead and use many of its own techniques to say, we'll give a variation for use for parking if you are a qualified developer, if you've got a project that the community can support. If you know what you're doing, you've done this before, et cetera, et cetera, and the city can put on those layers. Well, back when this property all of a sudden was bought by a California couple who had forty-eight hours of looking at it and never actually coming to the property or reaching out to the mayor, myself, or any other city official, they bought the property and thought that they had hit a gold mine and that they were then going to go out into the marketplace and flip it and sell it and make a million dollars. Well, reality came to bear as we did speak with them and said, we're holding the same standard that we've held for the last two years as this property has gone up for auction and nobody has bought it because of the mere fact of the zoning issue that's involved. So this body, some of your predecessors who sat at the dais here, recognize that, let's cut out the middleman. The property is best owned by the city. The city is best able to decide what the best uses are of this property and who and or who not should be getting variations for parking depending on their use. That brings us up to this evening. And so I put it out to all of you, Mr. Mayor, and your council of what types of uses would you like to see? I gave you some land uses to consider and I'm sure there are opinions, so I'll turn it back to you and I'll take notes and answer questions.
Yeah, there was a couple people that had been interested in it when it was up for auction who basically walked away. There was a bid on it, I believe, just over a million dollars. And at the time, the owner of the property declined that bid and it went back up. And obviously then nothing else came forward. Then, as David said, these people from out of state bought it just by seeing pictures apparently and never visited it and they paid three hundred thousand for it. That's what they sold it to us for, for three hundred thousand. There have been people that are interested in doing some development with the, with the location that have come to us, but we thought we'd bring it to you guys first. If Dave's idea was to either go out to our RFP to see what we get in or to let you guys tell him what you guys want to see here so that maybe one of those people that have already come forward would be a proper developer for that. So let's hear your opinions on what you, my opinion, just, just so you guys are aware is, I think it's suitable for residential. One of the ideas that we, Dave and I tossed around was this coworker spot on the first level, which he has on those recommended uses. We thought that was a great idea because many, many years ago, they were looking in that for artist lofts. And we thought that was a great idea, but it never materialized. But that coworker spot on the first level would maybe a small commercial, because there's only really a small spot for commercial there, would be appropriate in the rest residential. That's just, Dave and I just tossing it around a little bit. Let's hear what you guys have to say.
Yeah, maybe if I can just add, since you raised that point, the building dimensions, this property is a hundred and twenty feet deep going from north to south. So when you talk about land uses and trying to make commercial enterprise work in that kind of space, it becomes very difficult. A number of our buildings on Cirmac all have these one hundred and twenty-plus feet depth to them. They were built in the nineteen thirties. And circa nineteen thirty, why you were building structures that way is because you're back a house, your warehouse for your operation. You're buying two and three years' worth of clothing stock or other product and you stored them in the back room. And today, you just call up and you get the product the next day. So that has been a challenge on Cirmac on how do we go ahead and adaptively reuse those properties? And hence, when the mayor and I went and talked about this particular property and said, we've got some of those same challenges. And if we looked at saying, well, what about taking a restaurant and putting a restaurant on the bottom floor? Well, now you've got venting issues and black pipe issue and saying, how do we go through five stories of a building to get it out the top so that we're not spewing it onto the adjoining property at a lower level? It can be done, but it comes at a cost. But I just wanted to make you aware of, as you think about land uses and uses particularly on that property, and we look at the vacancy rates in the depot district, which have been diminishing over time, which is very positive. And now that all the improvements have been done by this body to finish off the depot district, it does make it more attractive. But we do have vacancies and with this amount of square footage coming into the market, it could be a disruptor.
Anybody have any ideas? All right.
Um, one of my questions would be, I mean, I think anything you've explained pretty well with the apartments, not apartments, but the empty space of all, the mixed use, uh, taxpayer, by the service. But the parking, I know back in the day, there was a possibility for somebody to go out there and run. Is there any possibility of being able to make a small parking lot, to make it more successful, more appealing for business? So even though, today's day, you can just pay the parking garage, it's just on the street. But you said it's, you know, big land making is very important, especially with developing, for the city, with control what's going on. Um, we, we, we take it further for the city and make it. I just personally get taken about the future while you're working on this and possibly try to produce something else, try to make more part of the available. You make whatever goes in there more successful.
Well, that building right next door is obviously not for sale. In fact, we met with the landlord just the other day, the guy who owns the building, he's a dentist, because there's gonna, might gonna be hopefully a transfer of the business that's in there. So he has no intention of selling it. That's the really only building, because on the corner then is just, I believe, just a cigarette store, if I'm not mistaken. So that's the only real adjoining building there and it kind of spans most of that. The, the idea about the parking is the problem. But again, with the residential needing only one parking space per unit, with the makeup of the depot district and how we have diagonal in some areas and stuff, besides the parking deck, we believe that that should be successful for variance if they, when they applied for it. That's, I think, the only real solution they have. We don't have anything to the south. Do we, David, on that property?
Yeah, well, to the south, we have an alley. This alley comes right here and then goes out behind Lockton area. Uh, there's a structure here that was renovated there, as you recall. It's got the numerous apartments upstairs now.
Right, right.
And is looking to open a restaurant sometime in the near future. They've been working on it.
They've been working on it for quite a while, yes.
And we did have this property here that's fifty feet wide by about a hundred and thirty feet deep. That, uh, how was, that commercial structure that blew up?
It wasn't that lot purchased, though?
That lot was purchased by the adjoining property owner.
Okay.
But that's, to do a typical parking lot, you need at least a sixty-foot width. And you need that for a twenty-four foot drive aisle in the middle and eighteen foot stalls on each side. If it doesn't have that sixty and start working in those kind of dimensions, you just have a lot of wasted space and there's, there's not a, a good game when you're creating parking deck.
So really to answer your question, Alderman, is there's really no available properties within a close vicinity that would probably be available to do parking?
And I'm gonna show you real quickly here, because like we can, on the form scale, we can see how close the parking deck is. So in a meter of feet, it would be five hundred and sixty-three feet by walking on the street to get from the front door to the parking garage. And while we have three hundred and sixty parking spaces in that garage, those garage spaces are not fully being utilized under the agreement. Anybody that's looking to use Metro can go ahead and use those parking spots as well as the additional sixty spots beyond that. So they're clearly parking and now that McNeil has acquired the thirty-three twenty-two South Oak Park property, they've redone that parking lot in the back and have taken full control and pushed everybody else out of it. While we don't know for sure what McNeil's long-term plans are, I would suppose that what is likely to happen down the road is they will build a new parking deck there themselves.
For McNeil?
For McNeil.
And some of the spaces that are taken in our parking deck are McNeil employees. So we anticipate that at some point we'll be losing them on the passes because what McNeil's gonna be doing with the bank building there.
And we've lost a vast majority of those already. Now that the lot behind thirty-three twenty-two is being fully controlled by the hospital, their employees are filling it. And the occupancy where they were having to pay a fee in our parking deck has thus diminished.
I was reading through, oh, can I ask a question?
Uh, Sarah, go ahead, Sarah.
Um, just out of curiosity, what about something like a sixty-five and older residential place? There might not be as much need for parking and...
Certainly that could be done and the parking would be again diminished because the likelihood of them having cars or needing cars and the proximity to the grocery store there does make that advantageous. The one negative is the disposable income that they have is not necessarily the same as what market rate apartments would have. Take somebody who's twenty-six years old and new to the workforce or a few years into the workforce with their income and saying, I'm not feeling like I need to save and I'm sort of spending my time enjoying the nightlife and the community around here. It is something to think about and I can certainly add that unless I hear otherwise.
No, I think that's a good idea.
Yes, Rob?
Uh, yeah, so on here, under the land uses to consider, I see that there's consideration around affordable housing requirements. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. Sometimes there can be grant dollars out there if you're doing affordable housing. If this property was two hundred feet away, if it was at this corner right here, we would be talking a whole different world of action because the census tract block for that area qualifies under the CDFI requirements and would give it preference and I'd have a whole host of developers lined up that could get state and federal funding to do a affordable housing project at that location. The project, in order to get the competitive point score, you have to be in the CDFI in order to go ahead and get that. Now, if we were going to locally go ahead and put some requirements on with a carrot and a stick, we can. But developer is then gonna be looking at that and saying, you're impacting then what my rent is going to be able to achieve at this sort of location by doing that. But can you do it? Sure, we could even put it out there just as a general nomenclature and saying, are you going to provide affordable housing and how many units would that be and what would that look like? That's something we can ask, doesn't have to be a requirement, but I'm hearing that would be something that you'd like to see.
Yeah, I'd love for you guys to explore that, if that's possible. Would be, would take that possibly like a condo, condos there or some...
I don't know that, if you remember the Sedgwick property on the corner, on the other, on the other side of the tracks, those were originally sold as condos and they even had the penthouses upstairs. They only sold five during that whole time and they eventually turned them into apartments. So I don't know what the taste out there is for condo purchases or condo development at this point. It's not necessarily off the table, though. It could be on the table if that's a developer, he can get those, yeah.
Yeah, the more market trend out there has been, go ahead and you can get the financing on the rentals. And then as you solidify your tenant base after about five years, you could go ahead and look and say, do we go ahead and flip this to then be condos? Because the turnover of those that have been renting for a period of five years or more to then convert and say, I could be buying this, jumps up significantly.
So a conversion is usually down the road on that. And that would be up to the developer or whoever owns the property.
What have then some of the ideas that the folks who showed interest brought forward for what they were thinking about doing with the...
Again, that was kind of what Dave and I tossed around and it was the apartments and that, that first level being a small commercial as well as that, what Dave classifies as, what do you call it, Dave, co-working, work-living?
Work-liv units.
Work-liv units.
And there were a couple people who were interested in maybe doing something like that?
Yeah, the, you know, one of the things we think that's very important is this corner here, which would be the northeast corner of the building. It's at that, that Oak Park Avenue view of the building as people drive by. We really believe that there needs to be some commercial activity in that particular space. That would give the, the sense of not encourage more, uh, commercial activity going on. But that particular space at that corner, it's imperative that we keep that as commercial activity. So if people go by it, that that's the sense of the downtown that they're getting, that it is stronger. The backend windows change, they're not as prominent as that particular corner, so we could do some things a little bit differently. But the idea of a work-liv unit really lets you go ahead and take artisans and others and say, I don't have to rent a studio someplace and let's say that's even six hundred dollars a month and I have my apartment then that's gonna cost me, you know, another twelve hundred. I'm getting it all in one location. And at the same time, you're taking that front window space of the structure and you're making it an active use that people see activity in that it doesn't seem like it's dormant.
Josh, you had something?
Yeah, a few questions, um, from my end. It's completely vacant right now?
Yes, sir.
What is our estimated annual holding cost? So if we don't do anything, what's the cost in the city?
Good question. I had a number on that. I can get, be correct when I give you a call back and I'll put it out to all of council on what the carry cost is. The carry cost that I'm gonna come up with is based off of what electricity utilities and what they had estimated from their closing statement. But there was a dollar associated with it. There's no property taxes being paid, so we're not having to worry about that at all. But since it is a city structure and we're holding it, electric? Ruth?
No.
No electricity, right?
Well, it's not, it wouldn't be electric unless it's revenue generated and there's no revenue being generated.
Yeah, I already added it on to our comment.
So that would reduce the cost for more things added. We have an insurance quick, right off the top of my head, at thirty thousand dollars a year. Uh, we've only insured it for demo, not for replacement. It is fully sprinkled, the sprinkler's active, it's been tested. So the regular maintenance, we're taking care of. We've shut off the heat system in it because, believe it or not, we don't need heat right now.
And there's nobody living there, so we don't need air.
Yep. Thank you for that. In terms of the interested parties, without mentioning who they are at the moment, would there be an approach of requests for qualifications from these developers? See how their experience with...
Yeah, as part of the selection criteria, the RFP would have completeness of submission, design quality and alignment with the objectives that you demonstrate, financial capability and acquisition and development experience, legal standing of their team, secured financing commitments, proposed purchase price or incentives that they're asking us for. All those would be part of the RFP that they go ahead and put in. So part of the qualifications that you're saying, we build that in so we're not doing two different things. We do it all as one package. The steps that we would be taking is I would finish off the RFP that I've been working on. I'd bring it back to the dais, whether you want to go to committee hold or not.
But eventually you'll take action on it to approve it.
That RFP would then hit the streets for a period of time. And then we would be doing some advertising and reaching out and seeing what people felt about a development proposal. Alternatively, if council said, hey, you know what, we like that particular concept, just go ahead and shop it around with a couple developers that way. We can do that, but by no means am I trying to direct the, the, where you as a council would like to go on this structure.
Sure, thank you. And then just maybe more of a statement for the fellow council members and audience here. Two properties that I'm familiar with, very similar in terms of its sort of historical precedent, presence in the city of Berwyn, but in Chicago, ten-twenty Lawrence Avenue and eleven thirty-nine West Lawrence. Those are two, one was actually a former bank repurposed.
Could you give me that second one again, please?
Eleven thirty-nine West Lawrence. Just as some examples to look at.
Were they developed with now?
Yep, so, uh, very similar, commercial on the bottom apartments. Exactly, yep. But keeping the character of the, the building and being mindful of...
Yeah, we don't, we don't see that we would want to change the structure, outside structure of the building at all. In fact, I don't even think they would take off the Berwyn State Bank in the stone.
Um, I, I know, I, I put out a little, you know, survey online just to kind of gather some feedback from folks and see, you know, if, if they ruled the world right, what would they want to see for the state bank building? And got a lot of feedback, a lot of ideas. And I just kind of organized them based on, you know, what seemed to gain the most support. Overall, it seems like folks really want to see some kind of commercial on the first floor, something that drives foot traffic to the area, which makes sense for the depot and, you know, trying to build it up. Surprisingly, the idea that seemed to garner the most support and, you know, take this with a grain of salt, it's a small sample size, but was doing some kind of youth center, something that would be, you know, hands-on activities for kids, pre-teens, teenagers, something that would serve Berwyn families, kind of like a Discovery World type thing. You know, obviously there's overlap and you could see services like, you know, what the community center, the senior center might be able to offer or what the public library offers and making sure that you're not...
And just, just along those lines too, in discussion with the recreation director, we're looking at next year trying to do some of those youth programs. Obviously, it's come to us, some of the programs are the younger adults, building drones, learning that kind of. So we want to build that into the rec program once we can get the senior center rolling. So that's an idea that we've been floating around over there. The reason being, there's a lot of interest in that right now, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, which is great to see. So I'd, I'd love to see that incorporated there as well. Another idea and one that actually I hadn't considered, but that kind of sticks out to me is using the building as a hotel. So, you know, it's kind of a good opportunity. It wouldn't be a huge hotel, probably around eighty rooms or something like that, but close to the Metro, close to McNeil, you'd have probably fairly decent use of the space. And then you could also, you know, people are throwing out fun ideas like having a rooftop bar on the third floor space in order to also bring in the community as well if they wanted to have a fun location or, you know, have it be kind of a destination for folks who are visiting the area because Berwyn doesn't have a hotel currently or motel. So that could be a potential. Third idea was having artists and cultural space, so not too different from the live-work artist spaces that you're talking about. And I think as long as, you know, it's something that is, you know, intended to kind of build community that maybe that corner space being used for selling, you know, the creations of local artists or being used for lessons, art lessons, that kind of thing. Obviously, we can't totally control everything like that.
Yeah, I think the corner, as Dave said, would probably reserve for retail. But that doesn't mean that live-work spaces cannot be kind of a studio for, if it's artisan or whatever it might be.
Right.
Crafts or whatever it might be.
I think the concern with the live-work studio that I have is just making sure that it doesn't turn into just a private residence where then, you know, it feels more closed off. You know, so as long as maybe as part of the lease agreement, right, you're somehow making it so that the artists or artisans who are living there have to uphold certain things, just to make sure that that... things, just to make sure that that frontage.
It's something we'd have to talk to the developer about, including in their leases then.
Yeah. And then, you know, just mixed use generally, I think, obviously that space lends itself, you know, to have commercial on the bottom and housing above it.
Well, we certainly can add those additional comments in and the idea of the hotel. Truth be told, I built a hotel in Lombard back in two thousand five to two thousand eight, which is the west end, and that one is actually owned by the village. So it's one of two hotels owned by a municipality. I would not recommend owning a hotel, but, you know, can it be done? Yes, it can be done, but the margins, you need lots of units, you need a high occupancy and a high rack rate and a boutique to go ahead and make it work. And you'd have to find somebody that's that kind of willing investor to go ahead and stomach that risk. Even when I look at doing residential, we're not seeing residential square footage go for that twenty-five dollars a square foot and that's what this project will probably require plus some incentive when I look at a housing type project, just saying, hey, we are not other communities where the market rate can go ahead and push up at thirty-five dollars a square foot or forty-five like down in the city. We are Berwind, we are our own unique community and we are a beautiful community, but we have to be realistic at the same time when saying, what can we drive? And a developer coming in is going to be pushing again and taking the risk at saying, I think I can get twenty-five dollars a square foot, which is goo- good for the community because it will push other properties along and encourage others to say, hey, it's worth making the investment here because those dollars can be had. So answering your question, yes, I'll go ahead and include the.
Any other suggestions on this building before Dave moves on to the next one?
And if we don't get to the other one, Mr. Mayor?
Well, no, I'd like them to hear them all, so we can.
Okay.
Anything else on this one?
Well, so when you put out for RFPs, would you would put some of this, some of the ideas like the senior living or something into the?
Yes.
Okay, that's great.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess my, my only concern with the, with the live-work idea is we're just like seeing a lot of those spaces going out of business, like the WeWork retraction and there's been like a couple of co, like working spaces around our neighborhood that have like closed over the last couple of years. I mean, I guess we're not taking on the, the risk to open up a business like that, but it's just something to think about.
I think there's a difference, Alderman. We're talking, this would be the front space of the, of let's say, one of the glass panes, okay? Somebody could be an artisan and let's say their pottery wheel is out front, their front studio, that's where they're going to do their artwork and their living quarters is in the back. It's not that they're going to be.
So more like studio space, not like a co-working space?
No, it's not a co-, I mean, it wouldn't prohibit, let's say, somebody that might have, and I'm making this up, might be an insurance agent or a financial planner and says, hey, that's my office up front and my dwelling unit's in the back end. And I'm a single dad and my kids are with a, with a mom, so it's the right environment that I can save some money. But, you know, you're talking those units, the live-work units would be anywhere from twelve hundred to two thousand square feet on that first floor. The balance of those units going up because you're going to particularly need to stack them based off the dimensions of the, of the floors. So floors three through five share the same footprint, floors one and two share the same footprint. But amenities that we may want to be looking at is could there be a business office for residents in the building as almost a co-working space that's shared down in the lower level? Do we go ahead and make sure that there's a good bike rack system and extra storage space? Things that other units in the area don't provide, but encourage and help the TOD design, transit oriented design that we want to go ahead and implement here.
Okay, got it.
Okay, let's move on to sixty-six oh nine, sixty-six thirty-nine Stanley Comcast LA Fox Auto.
Okay, so the properties we're talking about here would be the old Comcast property, which has the entire face block, the Allied property and the Fox Auto. Each one of these structures is roughly ten thousand square feet. Each of the structures are more industrial or light manufacturing and design and past use. So the Stanley properties are sort of a misnomer out there right now. It's a, it's a kind of old, I want to say, that was in Berwind. Again, these were built about nineteen fifty. The Comcast was built as a cross dock facility. So in the center of it, it's got a raised island, if you could imagine, so trucks on the east side could go ahead and pull in, back up, and then they could unload and go into another truck on the west side. So it's got a lot of concrete in it in the center. Its cost of demolition is going to be a little bit higher, but we have done environmental reviews on all of these buildings and we've got a clean bill of health on all three properties. We even took the incinerator that was in one of the buildings and checked the soil content around the ground around it and that was clean. So it's really positive that we've got good clean space here that we're dealing with on these properties. But again, I think the first thought is, are these the kind of structures we want to see adaptively reused or not? Or is it time that we go ahead and encourage that we want something totally new on the face of this and what would we like to see there? It is also in the C three. It is got a little bit of different designation under the comp plan of what it would like to see there as represented in the memo. But as I look at it, clearly the Allied building, the building in the middle is the best building. That was originally designed for a mover, a moving company. And the Fox Auto structure was, again, really an auto use design. Each of the buildings have got like a front office area on the south end of the building that wrapped partially around it as office space. I've looked at the, the Allied building and, you know, in my dreams sometimes, I came up with a dream kitchen idea of a commercial kitchen operating out of there. I went into the finances of what it takes to build one of those and the manpower to run it over with a hatchery and I was scared and didn't think it was something that was realistic anymore after experiencing and looking at it. But then we've talked with other folks that had said, well, I might be interested in running an entertainment operation out of that sort of ten thousand square feet, demolish the Fox Auto property, demolish the Comcast property, make both of those parking lots so that higher energy entertainment operation could go there. The challenge then comes, you're abutting up against the residential neighborhood. So is that something we would want to support or look at? And then the other component is the, the north south street there, is that Gunderson?
East Abbott.
Clarence. We could consider potentially a part of the redevelopment is dead ending Clarence there, here, and then this area here could then go with these two properties so you could get more solidified development. I've run some development plans. Easily each of those block faces could support about eighty dwelling units each and meet all your parking requirements and your stormwater requirements as well. So anytime we start doing these redevelopment projects, we're going to improve the stormwater systems that we have in our community by making these new properties or redeveloped properties that have aggregately disturbed the land to now provide stormwater for those areas, which will make it better for the adjoining neighbors.
Years ago, before we were able to obtain the Comcast building, we had a couple of different breweries interested in it, which would have been an ideal use for the Comcast. The unfortunate thing is the one big brewery that was interested was going through a restructuring and they kind of dropped out of the picture and I believe the other one, because we didn't have ownership of the property, dropped out of the picture rather quickly too. But that was always an idea for that Comcast building.
Yeah, we had a manufacturer, an apparel manufacturer.
We had that too, yep.
Was very interested in the property. We couldn't get ahold of it in time. This property has taken the city, I've been working on it for seven years. Mayor, you've been working on it for more than ten years at this point, but through hard work and determination, the property is now the city's. The only piece that we actually had to buy was the Allied property in the middle for a little more than five hundred thousand dollars. The other two properties, we paid a good deal in legal fees, probably about eighty thousand dollars, but now never had to acquire the properties in a purchase sale. It was just turned over to us in title.
Yeah, our attorneys did a good job in getting it turned over on blight citation defaults and stuff.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you did a good job by continuing to push everybody forward to make sure it happened.
I guess I'm a pushy guy, that's why.
We'll talk about that later.
Okay. But anyways, we have those three properties, so any ideas? Because I, I, I mean, we're kind of at a loss. I thought the breweries were a great idea, but, and the manufacturer that, that we had was a good idea, but we couldn't, you know, obtain the properties in time. Anybody?
Um, I, I don't necessarily have ideas. I love the brewery idea. I suppose it depends on kind of what the goals are for that stretch and, and so I'd be curious to hear more about that. But just for clarification, it sounds like this is more of a, kind of a blank slate or like, you know, you can choose to either retrofit or, you know, start from scratch, essentially.
Right.
Is that true?
Right.
Okay.
Josh, I believe this is your ward. Did you have any ideas?
Yeah, absolutely. So between the two properties, we're at, what about an acre, acre and a half?
Oh, there's three properties, actually.
Right, so between the, all of them.
Yeah, you have almost two acres. The positive news is that if you have more than an acre and a half of property, I'm going to say that word, you know it's coming, you can create a new TIF district, which can help on financing as you look at a project. And it is a tool in the toolbox that you can consider to use or not to use. It is presently in a TIF district that's due to expire in twenty thirty-three, the same as this, the Windsor property also will be expiring in twenty thirty-three.
Go on, Josh.
Yeah, in, in terms of the ideas, we talked about the, the Berwind State Bank building and the potential development there. We have three properties that would be ripe for development, so could, would there be some collaborative development between the properties on Stanley, likewise with on Windsor and the Berwind State Bank building? We see that happening right now just north of us in Skokie with their, it's actually funny the name of it, it's called the Swift District. In terms of repurposing industrial, light industrial, light manufacturing properties, actually one used to be an AT&amp;T property and putting transit oriented development, commercial on the first, first base. So those are things that I would want to consider if we're talking with, if we're going up for bid for the Berwind State Bank building, making sure that these are at least talked about as part of that proposal.
Yeah, I think we would put them both out at the same time so that developers can see and kind of marry the two if they wish, yes.
And there could be some benefit for them and when they're looking at financing options, et cetera, and startup of a project and use of equipment, all that can benefit by both projects going on at the same time.
That's right. And, and I mean, we spent millions and millions of dollars improving the infrastructure there, so to keep it light manufacturing or industrial purpose, I think that's not the walkability that people want in the immediate area. I, I think something that would be more, that would drive that would be a better usage for the proximity to the Laverne stop, the Berwind stop, we're twenty minutes from downtown.
Are you talking though more residential or commercial?
Residential with commercial, for mixed.
With commercial and for, okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, that's a, that's a lot of space, so I just also encourage that when we're looking at the RFP or when we're putting it together, if there's a way to write in to ensure that there's some green space created, whether it's including trees, native plant gardens or rain gardens, as you shared, right, we're building infrastructure under, underneath if we're doing residential, but it doesn't hurt for us to continue to build green infrastructure too, so I think it'd be great to include that in any big residential project.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I think this footprint is, is a diamond, to be honest with you. It's roughly, you said, almost two acres of land, especially if you connect it. I mean, the possibilities are endless. The hotel, you know, the mixed-use building, a concert area, brewery, I mean, the list keeps going on and on.
And it could be a combination, as you guys are suggesting too, of a couple of different uses, even with the, even with the green space, so.
You think the, the long-term tax revenue implications as well, so if we maintain it as its current state, a turn to a moving company, whatever the case might be, what does that look like ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years down the line for the city of Berwind and the taxpayers?
I, I think that's a great point, Alderman, that we shouldn't be looking at this as just a five-year deal. We should be looking at this from the dollar and cents point of view and saying, yeah, if we're breaking even in five or seven years on the investment that we have to make with incentives coming back, on the back end of this, what we've done is we've stabilized a piece of property, we've encouraged redevelopment and then the tax revenues associated between property and sales tax are the reward coming back to not only this village or this city, but to all the governmental units, because you're the only one that does economic development. The school districts are there to support us when we do TIFs, but at the end of the day, it's this body that takes the lead on all of that.
I think with the metro, it's come, with the train line that comes by, it's a big billboard, huge billboard for the city of Berwind. And be able to have this development, major development that goes on, thousands of people go past this. This could, they're not saying that the development that we've had in the past in the depot district is not successful, it is successful, but the point is that this could be that, that spark that we really needed to really, to breed that destination. But once again, we're bringing in parking, so whatever we decide to do, well, whatever we're going to try to bring together, make sure there's enough, enough parking because that could make or break that.
For whatever establishments are going there.
Yeah, I think, I think associated with these three pieces of property, they need to provide their own parking.
Right.
Per code onsite, but we do know that there's great overflow opportunities down at that end because we are between the Laverne station and the depot station, almost equidistant, and those parking spaces are very available during the evening and can really help benefit a development and activity.
So the disadvantage of the depot district is the vehicular traffic is low. However, the amount of people that do pass through, through with this metro station is, is an attraction. A lot of the businesses that are down there now have had success by bringing people from other communities because of the visibility. So you hit it on the head over there, if we put something good there, something nice, we have the people that go through there, right?
It's a billboard to say, welcome, come on.
Right.
And then as an example, whatever we have there, we just continuously walk. Other surrounding communities have been able to do this successfully, so we, so I'm not saying we haven't, not saying that at all, but I'm just saying this could be, like I said, this could be the spark.
Sure.
It ignites the cage.
And, 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 you know, I've always been of the opinion that you bring too many of one thing, that it hurts people, but when your people are in that business, they say no, the more competition, the better because it brings more people to the area, so.
If I could make a recommendation just with regards to parking, just thinking about kind of the fabric of the community, having it be this billboard, you know, making sure that it's someplace that really attracts people if there's a possibility for having the parking happen behind the buildings, just in order to not have sort of this gap that really kills walkability and also you lose a lot of frontage. Or, I mean, even better would be to have underground parking, but I know that that's pretty expensive, so.
No, but you can have first floor parking.
True. Yeah, I think you just don't want to lose that.
Alderman, almost like a Main Street kind of a facade.
Exactly, yeah.
That Main Street's like rounded butt up and really inviting.
Well, if we, if we, if we see the RFP, when it comes through, we see some of these ideas and if we want to sit with a particular one or two developers and say, okay, we like that, but parking over here, that's always possible too.
If we, I know parking cars are expensive, especially when you go off, I get it, I could wish, I could make a thousand wishes to get it, but it came true.
This is open, you can come in.
But the big thing is that we do have a couple of nice fests that go on, car shows. But the big thing is that we do have a couple of nice fests that go on, the car shows, the October fest and so forth and so on. So whatever is developed here, and it does have multi-level parking or underground parking, whatever it may be, will be utilized and will assist with bringing more people to the town for these events, to make it more friendly and near the place to park. I know we got tons of parking diagonal, but that's all cut out.
Right, right.
So just to, I'll throw a thousand ideas at you.
So, Mr. Mayor, with your consent, what I'd like to do is I'll go back, work on these RFPs, send them to all the aldermen individually, get their feedback, so that when I come to council next, that I have sort of built a consensus to then share on as a final document.
Yeah, as long as each alderman responds only individually too, so. Okay?
Great, thank you.
I have nothing else for Committee of the Whole. Did you have something else? Nothing else for Committee of the Whole? Can I have a motion to...
So moved. Second?
Motion to adjourn by Pabon, seconded by LaJia. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. See you back in a few minutes.
I love your dog.
Who's this from? Your friends? Who gave this, uh, credit? Look at that, LaJia. Look at the graphic, noise looking up, looks like they're starting another event or something. Now looking, I see they're looking. Garcia, they're showing all your tech messages. That's why I, that's why I didn't talk to you, I didn't put you in.
Clerk Garcia, can we call the council meeting to order, please?
Good evening. Caldwell?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Leha?
Here.
Fait?
Here.
Pabon?
Here.
Palashak?
Here.
Brockman?
Here.
Carmichael?
Here.
Ada Ismay?
Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And please remain still.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
If we could please keep in our thoughts and prayers all the men who we have on the street tonight. Thank you. Anybody wish to address the podium for open forum from the audience? Please step forward, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Laverro, members of the City Council. My name is Selena Pettiford.
Is that microphone on?
Yeah, thanks, I think so. Green light. My name is Selena Pettiford, thirty-one forty-five Clinton Avenue, right here in Berwick. On behalf of ourselves and our fellow neighbors, and as a follow-up to the issue presented to the Berwick City Council meeting on January tenth, I'm sorry, June tenth, we're requesting consideration for changing the time restrictions for public parking access in our area. Currently, there already are time restrictions in our area. It's from eight o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock in the morning, but there's not a problem during the morning hours. We're simply requesting these time restrictions be modified to reflect the current needs of the community, seeking relief from evening hour parking congestion. And I'm hopeful that the city of Berwick will take our request for new time restrictions into serious consideration. And I'd just like to wrap it up by giving you an example of the problems, one example, one big example of the problems this parking situation has caused. We used to have neighbors, Joe and Charlotte, who lived thirty-two oh two on Clinton Avenue, south of the Victory Outreach Center. One day, back about ten years ago, Joe, who used to, was a veteran, retired veteran, he had some health issues, but didn't want to apply for handicap parking for whatever reason, he used to park in front of his house, which was about ten or fifteen steps away from his door. There was one, I don't know if it was Saturday, or Sunday, or Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, whatever day of the week it was, he had, he was forced to park down on Thirty-first Street. By the time he walked back, the seven or eight hun- a hundred feet to get from where he had parked to his home, he collapsed right in front of the Victory Outreach Center. They were kind enough to help him. They called an ambulance. Joe went to the hospital, and he never returned. He passed. His sister, who was suffering from dementia, no longer had her caregiver. She was put in a home. So this is just one example. It's rather extreme, but it's kind of always been with me. And when I see my neighbors circling the block, trying to find parking, asking me if they can park in the alley, the examples go on and on and on, so I won't bore you here, but I really hope that the City Council will consider our request.
I will tell you that Alderman LaJia has been doing a lot of homework and research on this. He's spoken to the church, he's spoken to neighbors. He is in conversation with our traffic engineer now to see what we can do in that area.
Thank you.
Okay.
I've also disseminated all the paperwork that you've gave to every alderman.
Sure?
Hi, it's me again. I'm Daniel, First Ward resident. I'm here today to sort of reiterate on some comments that a fellow resident of mine made last session, and to offer up some potential sources of inspiration, or potential examples that we might follow that have developed over the past couple of weeks. I'm, we're all aware, by now I'm sure, that there's a trend among federal agents conducting immigration arrests in unmarked vehicles and some without license plates, wearing masks, refusing to display what agency they're with, or announce what agency they're with. They are taking people without explanation. This is, of course, in direct violation of our laws and rights. In Berwick. These actions are sparking rumors in our community about vigilantes and... The guise of federal enforcement. And I can't blame them, because if they're masked and they don't identify themselves, how do we know? We can't. I want to be clear, no evidence of anyone impersonating agents in the Chicago area. I, I want a clear, not spreading base of fear, and I hope everyone listening would do the same. However, with ICE acting the way that it is right now, it would be very easy for someone to impersonate a federal agent. And it might not be long before someone does. Aside from spreading fear, I think that also raises some logistical questions for the Berwick Police Department. If an unmarked car with tinted windows, license plate is spotted in Berwick, would it be pulled over? If unidentified armed masked men arrived on your block and you called the Berwick Police, would they intervene? If those men broke down your door, refused to identify themselves, and took away someone you loved, would the law punish you for defending yourself? The answer is clear if this is a situation of gang violence or lone gunman. We know Berwick PD would intervene, but we have no way of knowing that these people are actually federal agents. When ICE operates in secret, it does two things. It becomes possible that someone looking to terrorize will impersonate a federal agent. But it also becomes possible, and true, that law enforcement terrorizes. So to help solve this two-part issue, I wanted to suggest a couple of examples that we might follow. The first being that of Arturo Flores, the mayor of Huntington Park in Los Angeles County, California. He's directed his city's police department to enforce laws concerning unmarked vehicles, visible license plates, and agency identification. And he's directed the police department to investigate and intervene if any unauthorized operations place public safety or civil liberties at risk. We should also follow the example of California Senator Sasha Rene Perez, whose new proposed No Vigilantes Act would require federal law enforcement to display clear identification and to allow police to demand ID from those claiming to be law enforcement. If we follow this example, the goal would be to have Berwick Police make it more difficult for ICE to spread terror and to operate in secret, and to make it more difficult for anyone who wants to also spread terror and operate in secret from impersonating them. We cannot allow ICE to continue to operate as an unaccountable secret police force in our city, and there are clear examples of what we might do to make it so they cannot do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tim. I am recently of the Third Ward, moved from the Seventh Ward. I wanted to speak today and to talk to the alderman and mayor to, on a similar topic, it's the last speaker, especially the piece about Huntington Park. Over the weekend, the mayor directed the municipal police department to start enforcing laws concerning unmarked vehicles, visible license plates, and required agency identification. This was just said in the last speaker, but this came on the heels of masked gunmen who would not identify themselves, causing panic and fear in the community local to Huntington Park. The reason I wanted to bring this up to this council meeting is related to the meeting two weeks ago, where some similar concerns were made, and the topic of Berwyn communicating with other local municipalities that were also called out, in addition to Berwyn, by DHS recently as being sanctuary cities, sanctuary cities that were being targeted. There was a call for this ruling body here to engage with the other municipalities on that list, to hopefully share information, and maybe even work together, should the need arise. I'm not sure if Berwyn elected officials have made contact with other cities yet. I'm hopeful that that's the case, but I'm not sure. But I think if Berwyn were to issue a statement similar to California's Huntington Park, directing peace officers to, and making it publicly known that our peace officers will enforce laws concerning unmarked vehicles, visible license plates, and required agency identification, it would put Berwyn in a position of leadership by example and by action, which other municipalities could reference and emulate. This could strengthen Berwyn's relationship with like-minded municipalities, and simultaneously demonstrate that Berwyn and its mayor are not afraid to forge ahead and set precedence in Illinois. Benefit from, the benefits from issuing such a statement go beyond altruism. Issuing such a statement and directive would bolster Berwyn's reputation, but it would also have economic impacts. We already see too many people deciding to stay in and hunker down, rather than risk being abducted or just plain harassed by masked gunmen. If you're at all on the Facebook pages, you will see a lot of references to ICE being in the area, or unmasked people, we're not sure if their eyes are enough, and then people deciding to stay in. This means that people are not meeting coworkers for happy hours, not eating at restaurants, and not shopping at our retail stores. Issuing a directive to have our peace officers enforce agency identification would have real impacts on the confidence of Berwyn residents and visitors, and their economic choices. With that, I do strongly encourage this body to issue a statement and directive to clearly state that our peace officers will enforce these laws concerning unmarked vehicles, visible license plate, and required agency identification, as allowed in the ILCS Criminal Code. There are a lot of, there aren't a lot of opportunities for Berwyn and its elected officials to show their potential beyond its borders, but this is one of those opportunities, and I hope we don't let it pass.
Alderman Pabon has already stated that he is our liaison with respect to connection with other communities, so we're just waiting for a report so we can decide how we're going to approach that.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience? Xavier?
Hello, everyone. My name is Xavier Barahas. I am an outreach ambassador for the city of Berwyn, and a First Ward resident. I'm here to remind residents about the upcoming Eighth Annual Breast Care Walk Run that will be taking place on June 28th at Moreham West High School. This event further raises awareness for those who are affected by breast cancer. And so it is important for our community to show our support by participating in this event. The event will take place at Moreham West High School, with registration starting at 8:30 a.m., and the walk beginning at 10 a.m. You can register either online or in person on the day of the run. So, thank you for your time, and we hope to see you there.
Thank you. No more?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nomar Bello, and I'm outreach ambassador for, for the city of Berwyn, and a, and a Fourth Ward resident. I'm here today to tell you about Berwyn's Working Cat Pilot Program. This program captures feral cats and releases them into areas with large rodents, rodent populations. This, these cats will be neutered, vaccinated, and chipped. With the help of residents, they will be given food and water for those who are willing to be cat caregivers. We're asking for every resident's help by taking a quick survey to let the city know if they would be open to supporting this pilot program, or if they have any additional feedback. We will be filling out these surveys for residents outside of, outside of these chambers. We look forward to hearing from your responses. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderman, anything for open forum? Hearing none. Item C1, please.
Item C1 is the approval of the regular city council minutes of June 10, 2025.
Be my motion to approve the council minutes of the meeting of June 10, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Faith, second by Pabon, to approve the council minutes of June 10, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item E1, please.
Item E1 is a communication from BDC Director Holsberg, an amendment of Tony's Finer Food Enterprise LLC agreement.
Uh, be my motion to concur with Director Holsberg, and approve this agreement to an economic incentive agreement, and have the corporate authorities fix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Faith, second by LaJia, to concur with the Berwyn Development Corporation, and approve the Economic Incentive Agreement Amendment, and fix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor, on the call to roll.
Caldwell?
Aye.
Bowman?
Aye.
Leha?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Palaszczuk?
Aye.
Brockman?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight Eyes Mayor?
Motion carried. Item F1, please.
Item F1 is a proclamation recognizing June 2025 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month.
I would ask that Alderman Bowman address this issue, since he brought it to our attention. Alderman?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for supporting my introducing of this proclamation at a time where LGBTQ plus rights are under attack nationally. It reinforces our commitment as a welcoming city for all that live here and visit here.
The proclamation reads, "All people deserve dignity, respect, compassion, and justice regardless of gender, identity, age, race, religion, economic status, or sexual orientation. And whereas the month of June commemorates the 1969 Stonewall uprising, recognized as a catalyst of the modern LGBTQ plus rights movement, a significant milestone in the ongoing pursuit of equality. And whereas Pride Month has been recognized officially by the state of Illinois since 2020, and by the United States federal government for 14 of the last 25 years, symbolizing our collective commitment to civil rights and social justice. And whereas the city of Berwyn openly supports the rights of every individual to experience equality of treatment and celebrates our diversity community, our diverse community, recognizing this diversity as one of Berwyn's greatest strengths. And whereas Berwyn is proud to be among the top five cities in Illinois with the highest percentage of same-sex couples, reflecting our community's longstanding diversity, inclusivity, and commitment to equality. And whereas Berwyn enthusiastically demonstrates its support through community activities, visibility initiatives, and advocacy efforts to recognize and uplift the voices of LGBTQ plus individuals. And whereas the city of Berwyn encourages all residents to be active allies of the LGBTQ plus community by promoting inclusion, standing against discrimination, and fostering a city where all people feel seen, heard, and valued. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that Robert Lovero, on behalf of the City Council and residents of Berwyn, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in Berwyn, Illinois. We encourage all community members to participate in educational and celebratory events and activities that honor and support LGBTQ plus community, dated this 24th of June, 2025."
Alderman?
I move to adopt the proclamation titled "June 2025 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month," as submitted.
Go ahead, finish.
Direct the corporate authorities to fix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage.
Second. Motion by Bowman, second by Palaczek, to adopt the proclamation, affix the necessary signatures, place it on its way to pack, passage, and recognize June 2025 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month here in Berwyn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item F2, please.
Item F2 is a resolution of the city of Berwyn in support of the Illinois-America 250 Commemoration.
We're not going to read it, just.
It be my motion to adopt the resolution in support of the Illinois-America 250 Commemoration, authorize the corporate authorities to fix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Pabon, second by Caldwell, to adopt the resolution, to fix the necessary signatures, and place it on its way to passage, recognizing Illinois-America 250 Commemoration. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item F3, please.
Item F3 is appointment of the new city of Berwyn Public Works Director, John Marchand.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, it's my motion to approve the appointment of Public Works Director, John Marshand, and thank Mr. Schiller for his years, years of valuable service.
Second.
Motion by Palaczek, second by Faith, to concur with the appointment of John Marshand as Public Works Director, and thank Mr. Schiller for his years of valuable service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Caldwell?
Mayor, if I, would it be possible to submit an amendment to the item on the agenda at this point as a secondary motion?
I do not see that, no.
I'm just curious, I've recognized that, you know, it is your prerogative to put forward appointments, but, you know, per Robert's rules, I believe, secondary motions can be put forward after the primary motion has been.
We have a primary motion, we have a second, we have a roll call. If you want to put something up forward after, we have to do the roll call.
Okay. So are we voting on the primary motion?
Correct.
Primary?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, I, I just want to be clear with my vote prior to making it, that this is not a reflection of Mr. Marshand's qualifications. My intent is simply to, you know, I guess, discuss, you know, the desire to meet with Mr. Marshand prior to making a vote, in order to assure that myself and other council members, many of whom have not had the opportunity to meet Mr. Marshand, you know, have that opportunity, so that we are making an informed vote, and so with that, I vote nay.
Bowman?
Nay.
LaJia?
I think Mr. Marshand is eminently qualified, and we all have the opportunity, we make the opportunity to study this, and, and go to the principles, and find out what we're going to be voting on ahead of time, so. I vote yea.
Faith?
Mr. Marshand is well-qualified. I vote aye.
Pabon?
Nay.
Palaszczuk?
Mr. Mayor, I vote yea. I've known John for many years, lifelong resident. Drive around the city at any time, you'll see him at many projects. He knows everything about any water main, any sewer issues. Pretty much about everything about Berwyn. He is Berwyn. I stand by this, your appointment, and I applaud him for his service, so thank you.
Brockman?
Aye.
Carmichael?
I've never met Mr. Marshand. I'm sure he's great at his job. Look forward to working with him, but I'm going to vote nay.
That's a split one. Mayor, it's four ayes and four nays.
Then I will cast the deciding vote. I will vote aye for John Marshand as the new Public Works Director.
Do you, John Marshand, having been appointed to the office of Berwyn Public Works Director in the city of Berwyn, in the county of Cook, afford to solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of Public Works Director according to the best of your ability?
Yes, I do.
Congratulations.
Item F4, please.
Item F4. Item F4 is the reappointment of Thomas O'Halloran to the police pension board for a three-year term expiring 6/24/2028.
I move that we concur with Mayor Lovero's reappointment of Thomas O'Halloran to the police pension board for a three-year term expiring June 24, 2028.
Second.
Motion by LaJia, second by Pabon, to concur with the reappointment of Tom O'Halloran to the Berwyn Police Pension Board for a new three-year term expiring June 24, 2028. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item F5, please.
Item F5 is the reappointment of James Swisyonis to the police pension board for a three-year term expiring on 6/24/2028.
I move that we concur with Mayor Lovero's reappointment of James Swisyonis to the police pension board for a three-year term expiring June 24, 2028.
Second.
Motion by LaJia, second by Pabon, to concur with the reappointment of James Swisyonis to a new two-year term expiring June 24, 2028, to the police pension board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have a question real quick.
Yes.
My apologies, on one, it says three.
They're staggered. Oh, it should be a different year.
The agenda.
It should be 2026, excuse me. The two-year term should be June 24th of 2026. Yeah, yeah. Well, it is a two- and a three-year term, they're staggered. So we'll make that correction on that. Thank you. Item I1, please.
Item I1 is a communication from Alderman Carmichael of American Legion's Annual Picnic on August 16, 2025, between noon and 9:00 p.m. at 12:00 in South Kenneworth Avenue. Street closure requested.
It would be my motion to approve the American Legion Annual Picnic on August 16, 2025, and do a slight amendment. It's not going to be taking place at my house, it'll be taking place at the corner of Roosevelt and Clinton, and provide, provide the street closure equipment and any other necessary city services.
Second.
Motion by Carmichael, second by Pabon, to approve the American Legion Annual Picnic, August 16, at the cul-de-sac at the Commodore Berry, and all the necessary city services. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J1, please.
Item J1 is a communication from City Attorney Bertucca to authorize a settlement of 2024 L. 001035 in the amount of $120,000.
Be my motion, concur with City Attorney Bertucca in settle case 2024 L. 001035 in the amount of $120,000, based on council authority granted in executive session.
Second.
Motion by Faith, second by Pabon, to concur with the City Attorney Bertucca and approve the settlement for the captioned case in the amount of $120,000, as approved by executive session in the City Council. All those in favor, on the call to roll.
Caldwell?
Aye.
Bowman?
Aye.
LaJia?
Aye.
Faith? Pabon?
Aye.
Palaszczuk? Brockman?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight Eyes Mayor?
Motion carried. Item J2, please.
Item J2 is a communication from Fire Chief Caniglio requesting to purchase a 2025 Ford Escape with Suburban Purchasing Cooperative through Curry Motors for a total of $29,722.
Chief, did you have something you want us?
Unless there's questions.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move that we concur with Chief, Fire Chief Caniglio, request to purchase a 2025 Ford Escape with Suburban Purchasing Cooperative through Curry Motors for a total cost of $29,722.
Second.
Motion by LaJia, second by Pabon, to concur with Chief Caniglio, waive the sealed bid process, and approve the purchase of the 2025 Ford Escape from Curry Motors for the total cost of $29,722. All those in favor, on the call to roll.
Caldwell?
Aye.
Bowman? LaJia?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Palaszczuk?
We couldn't squeeze out any more years out of that 2013, huh?
Brockman?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Eight Eyes Mayor?
Motion carried. Item J3, please.
Item J3 is communication from Public Works Director Schiller to waive the sealed bid process and approve extension of sewer televising with National Power writing in the amount, rotting in the amount of $432,000, plus a 15%